Our June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty. The members of the board who are present and myself, Vice Chair Carmen Sultan, Jana Johnson Davis, and Hans Oates, along with Superintendent Herman and Board Attorney Bob Wilson. Thank you all for joining us this evening. At this time, I ask that everyone join me in a moment of silent reflection. Thank you. At this time, all that are able, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Board members, are there any revisions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Board Chair, I would like to add an item to reduce the millage rate for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget by point seven mils to a twenty point three mil rate.
So a motion to discuss that and have that. Yes. Okay. Absolutely, so we will put it down as an action and discussion item as point C on the discussion. Do I have a second for that conversation?
A second.
I hear a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so add that as a C subpoint to the discussion items this evening. And then, any other suggestions? Excellent, seeing no further, can I have a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
A motion to approve the agenda for this evening.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the amended agenda for this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Our next agenda item is approval of minutes for the previous board meeting work session. The minutes were provided to board members for review in your board packet. Any questions or corrections that need to be made to the minutes? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from your June, oh, May board meetings?
Move to approve the minutes from the May board meetings.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes from the May board meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
We'll turn it over to Doug Furman to introduce the spotlight.
Thank you, Chairman Herden. It is my distinct honor to ask Ms. Newton Scott to come up to the podium. She is going to recognize our graduating, our third cohort of graduates from the CSD Leadership Academy. So she will come and run this part of the program. Thank you. Sure.
Can you help moving it? Yeah.
Yeah, I would definitely.
Thank you both.
Good evening.
Evening.
It gives me great pleasure to stand before you this evening to highlight the amazing journey that a group of CSD educators and administrators have been on since January. I want to begin by thanking Dr. Furman for laying the foundation for us to have a leadership academy that requires that all executive cabinet members, also we both, engage with our staff in learning about how their role supports schools and students. Been at CSD a long time, and I participated in a leadership experience, and I've learned a lot from it, but it was all theory. But this academy made real connections with real people who do the great work to support us. The design and structure built for the academy was a great blueprint to follow as I stepped into facilitating this experience. Thank you again, Dr. Furman, and all the members of the executive cabinet for not just attending when you were presenting about your department, but being present and involved each time we met. That speaks volumes. With that said, I'd like to recognize each graduate of the Leadership Academy Cohort Three for extending their day until seven PM every Thursday, every third Thursday, to engage in rich learning through book discussions, reflection, problem solving through real scenarios, and sharing their experience in their work. They are a remarkable group of people who share their gifts and talents with our students, families, families, and others who work in CSD every day. So as I call your names, please come to the front, receive your certificate, and take a picture with Dr. Furman. Okay, up first, we have Taylor Blankstein. She is a Spanish educator at Beacon Hill Middle School. She is also their PBIS coach. Thank you, my Taylor. Next up, we have Kevin Champion. He is the Assistant Principal at Decatur High School. Katie Green is a second grade teacher at Claremont. She's also Claremont Teacher of the Year and is the teacher representative on the PTA Board and will serve as the Math Cultural Lead for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I'd like to also congratulate Karina Green, who is an instructional coach and next year will be the IB Coordinator for Decatur High School. Our wonderful Communications Coordinator, the lovely Paris Hartnett, also is a part of this cohort. Tanya Higginson, Interim Coach, Principal at Westchester, last year. Natasha Patton, who's a talented third grade teacher at Fabe and also serves on the school leadership team. David Todd, he is a longstanding eighth grade math teacher at Beacon Hill Middle School and has worked at both Glenwood Academy and Fabe. Allison Forte Paul, who is the Physical Education Teacher and Head Girls Flat Football Coach at Decatur High School. She famously served as Assistant Principal at Tally Street Upper Elementary School. Honda Nesbit is our gifted teacher at Westchester and District Teacher of the Year. The male, Hope Cox, is nurse and Equity Team Lead. She serves on the school leadership team, all at Claremont Elementary School. Jennifer Triplet is in her first year as Principal at Oakhurst. Fredian Lockwood is the Assistant Principal at Fabe, and she is the future principal of Claremont Elementary. Shannon Stewart is the IB Coordinator at Fabe and has served as interim Assistant Principal. Is that it? Did I miss anyone? Oh, I feel so good about that. To the graduates of the academy, as you step into new roles in the near future, pay close attention to how you show up as individuals. Push for greatness, craft your story and tell it. Find opportunities to share your story and explain how your personal values and aspirations align with your work. Build duos. A duo is you and someone else who, in times of uncertainty, you can lean on and trust. Listen, 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 but don't forget to act. Leaders who challenge their own assumptions become far wiser and gain much more respect than those who try to establish authority too quickly. And remember to love, not fear. You are likely to do things that some people won't like. Many may decide that they know you as a result. Can't worry about that. If you let your fear of becoming unpopular or making the wrong move affect your decisions, then the authenticity of your. Instead, forge ahead and lead from a place of love. Bring your full self to every challenge and take one hundred percent accountability for the outcome. Not only will you gain people's trust, you are likely to earn their enduring respect. Congratulations to each of you.
Thank you, and congratulations. At this time, we'll move on to public comment. Dr. Furman, do we have any members of the public signed up to share?
We do not.
Hey.
Actually, I think that might be the first time in the entire time I have served on the board that that has been.
Fair enough, I can skip all of that. At this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Dr. Furman. Share any comments you have this evening?
Actually, I just wanted to recognize Tetravian and Wayne Struhl for their appointments as principals starting July four. Congratulations. So excited to have you at the helm of both those schools. I know we'll see great things to come. Congratulations.
Excellent. Now move on to the chair's report for this evening. I want to start by thanking the staff and faculty of CSD and the high school. Graduation last month was an absolutely magnificent event. I had the opportunity to have coffee with the new director, Executive Director DEF Ricky Hyde, earlier this week, and he said that he's never attended, I want to make sure I quote him correctly here, he's never attended a graduation that felt more student focused. And made me tear up a little bit, you know? That's exactly what I think that the faculty and staff go for, and it's shown through. Second, and my final comment, is the board would like to take the opportunity to thank Dr. Maggie Furman for her time, her passion, her commitment to education in Decatur. To say that Dr. Furman inherited a school district in need of some leadership stability would be a bit of an understatement. I looked it up, fifty percent of public school districts have changed superintendent at least once since March of twenty twenty. That was an ILO group released in December of twenty twenty-two. Hans is here, so I know I need some statistics for that. The previous terms between nineteen, twenty eighteen and twenty twenty, only twenty-seven percent of those same districts had changed superintendents. Maggie brought, during a time of stress on education, political, social changes, stable district leadership that was pivotal to help our students recover and continue to grow from pandemic-era learning loss. There are many students in this city that are grateful for your time and your leadership. A few of her accomplishments and highlights I wanted to point out. I want to start with the strategic plan, which you can find on the website. My favorite line from it is, "This plan will provide CSD with a clear focus on students as we confront and overcome racial, economic, and social injustices and disparities." Bottom line, the plan will ensure CSD can equitably and effectively meet the needs of all of our students. Those are great words that Dr. Furman is leaving us with, and our new superintendent has said that that is her starting point. Thank you for placing us there. She has worked behind the scenes to renew our charter in the past few months. She has championed the Decatur Virtual Academy, its classes, its first graduates. She's remained data-driven in focusing on what she wanted to do. Her leadership has propelled CSD to remarkable success. I was reading the Decaturist article and the quote from the new board in Asheville City Schools, and they are lucky to have you. We rank first in the state for student performance in categories like third grade reading, fifth grade reading, ELA. Ninety-six point seven-three percent graduation rate in a community that is more than ten percent economically unequal. We ranked fifteenth in Georgia, and that number that I just said was the one that stood out most to me is that we are serving a lot of students well. And the number that I've heard you say before, I want to make sure, top SAT and ACT scores in the state from two years you were the superintendent, you should hang your hat on that. Thank you, thank you. Good luck in Asheville. Got you.
Oh, so nice.
The biggest, don't tell my wife, we got that for it, the biggest buffet I've ever seen.
So pretty.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome. It was an honor. Good to do it. It's a great team of individuals.
Does anyone else have any comments for the chair report before we move on to consent items? All right. Items for action, information, and discussion, move on to consent items for, let's see, the personnel report, school nutrition, financial reports, Tally Street Upper Elementary Field Repair, fiscal year twenty twenty-four, school nutrition IFB milk. Is there a motion to discuss any of those issues? To approve, I'm sorry, a motion to approve those issues?
Move to approve the consent items.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to information, the board has provided copies of the reports on Spring Athletics Activities Review and Legacy Park Presentation. I believe we're moving on to, yeah, absolutely. Call up.
All right. Sergio, do you want to introduce our speaker? Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Furman, Board Chair, vice chair members. I have Gary Caraway, who's going to present the update on Legacy Park Track and Field. He's going to provide information where we are and where we're standing, how the project is going.
Thank you. Are you dressed this way or?
Wherever you're most comfortable.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm Gary Caraway, I'm a landscape architect by trade with BreeGlove Land Planning. A really fun project for us. We do a lot of sports facilities, very rarely do we get to do ones that actually blend into a park setting and, you know, it's not just a high school stadium, if you will. It's got a lot of unique challenges, but a lot of really neat opportunities. Everybody's probably familiar with Legacy Park around here, the seventy-seven acre former historic United Methodist Children's Home. It went through a master planning process recently, and so part of that master plan showed a track and field down adjacent to the gym. So as you see, it would plug in, kind of in that space right there, adjacent to the existing pool. Just to give you a quick rundown of kind of the process, we had a series of programming meetings, a series of public. Programming meetings are essentially, you know, with this being a partnership between the city of Decatur and the city schools of Decatur, it's essentially to make sure we cover everybody's swamps and make sure, how do we cover everything that both departments need and blend those together as best we can? And then with the public meeting process, you know, get everyone's feedback on what they really are looking for in this, in this track and field. Actually, as we see, there's a public meeting going on over at Legacy Park. That's our third and final one over there right now, so. Moving forward, you know, here we are in June, so as I said, we got a public meeting going on right now. Here we are at the Board of Education. We're going to be meeting with the City Commission soon, and following that, you know, hopefully the goal is to plow into design. So our team of consultants, mostly BreeGlove Land Planning, we also have an architect on board who primarily their goal is to study the existing gym facility and understand if there's renovations possible to help accommodate storage and other needs that the track and field facility will have. And otherwise, if not, potentially design a new field house. There's a big stakeholder team that includes the city and school team members, as well as Legacy Park members. As I said, we do a lot of fields. Part of what we did to get kicked off, we met with our city school stakeholders and walked through a lot of the possibilities. So, you know, you see a track and you kind of think there's kind of a standard size and so forth, and there is, but there's also a little bit of variation to that, so you can play with that a little bit. We went through all those options to help make sure we could fit the site as best as we could. Been meeting with the city staff as well and stakeholders, understanding what, how they would use the field and what their desires are. One of the key takeaways was that everybody thought like, this isn't cool to build. So existing pool was essentially not really necessary, there's other pools in the city, and that opens up more space adjacent to the. So some pictures from just the public meeting process, you know, we did character studies to see what people were into, both from an architectural standpoint, but also the site standpoint. And a lot of what we heard was just, you know, from, from folks, hey, we are excited about a track and field, we're excited about potential for soccer and other things to be played in the actual field. Also, just blended in with the parks as best we can, because it is a historic resource, it's a lot of wildlife and other things that are really neat assets that, you know, that's a, that's a gem in the city that it's rare in a city to have a property that large with so much going on. So we want to make sure we blend this in as best we can. We met with, you know, track coach, we met with cross-country coaches, understanding exactly what they need in terms of, you know, all the elements they want to include, make this a top-rate facility. Understanding the field house, you know, what all would need to be in there or in the gym, you know, concessions, storage, restrooms, so forth. We had our team, structural engineers, NEP engineers, everybody go in and evaluate the gym, and, you know, basically they found that we could accommodate some storage, we could do some modifications that allowed for some restrooms to be in there, but we're still probably going to need that field house. That field house is still going to play a critical component with concessions, and then also just having a public restroom that could be accessed, you know, at all times. So just kind of showing you roughly what they kind of went through. All sorts of different spatial layouts, so this was all the stuff that we really worked in detail with the stakeholder group. And also what we came up with was using this, it's kind of a brokeback track configuration. It's actually what they have at Pace Academy for reference. But it just, again, fitting the land as best we could. So this is kind of where it landed. This kind of gives you the dimensions, we're trying to get as big a soccer field as we can, so we were able to get the seventy yard wide. We were able to fit some of the track components in the D-zone there. And then we've also got striping laid out. So the striping, again, has got to accommodate both what the city needs and what the school. So there's a lot of variation there. So there's little tick marks in there, and that gives them kind of guidance on chalking additional lines when they need to. So for flag football and other rec sports, they didn't necessarily need to have permanent striping to confuse everybody, you know, so we have, we have some ticks there. So getting into the fun stuff, this was the, this is kind of the survey, kind of shows you what we're working with. We came up with a couple of variations based on everything we heard. First variation was trying to tuck the track in as close as we can to the access road there, taking advantage of the grade for some kind of unique seating opportunities. But really, the goal here was to not push this thing any further towards the dairy barn in the back and the conservation easel in the back. There's also a cross-country trail back there, so as much as we could kind of pull back towards the road in this scheme. The other scheme was actually trying to make it kind of flow a little bit more. So it pushes out a little bit more, but using kind of some neat path arrangements and so forth, we can make this feel a little bit more park-like. And again, you think right from those images I showed at the beginning, a typical high school stadium, you know, it's designed to be able to host up to play all football. You've got to have six thousand people, you know, it's got to be monstrous. You don't have to have that on a track and field or in a park setting, so it gives us a lot of unique opportunities there. So we showed those in some of the public meetings, we walked through and showed everybody kind of where we've been, and again, just showing that we listened to the comments and tried to implement them into the plan as best as possible. And then we met with the real experts, cross-country coach, we met with the high school track team. They gave us all their feedback, it was critical. Ultimately, we kind of compiled a giant list of the comments, of things they wanted to see in those two plans, what the favorite was, what's the preferred plan, and then how. Shows kind of the preferred building renovation concept for the existing gym, which shows storage on the backside, and place for maintenance equipment and so forth, but also the new lobby and restroom that would be on the far end. And then here's the layout of the field house, which includes concessions, you know, restrooms and all that good stuff. It's kind of what it would look like. Again, architecturally playing off of some of the existing buildings out there with the brick and stone work. That was a lot of what we heard from both the public and the stakeholders. But this is kind of where we've landed. This is the preferred concept that's kind of taken all of that into account, and this kind of represents where we're headed. So what you'll notice is adjacent to the existing gym, we have created a new lobby, we've created restrooms, and we've made that facility accessible for all. That was something that was a challenge previously, it was mostly entered by stairs as the gym was lifted up. But we've created some neat opportunities in front there with some multipurpose spaces, some flex spaces. That'll work well for campers in the middle of summer, or it'll work well for, you know, track teams getting warmed up and so forth. We've built in some kind of amphitheater-style seating along that road edge, so, you know, it's not a giant set of bleachers, and the track kind of sits down into the site. So, you know, if you're sitting in one of these historic buildings, kind of looking out, you know, it's not this big eyesore, it's trying to blend in a little bit more with the site. And we've had to realign slightly to the cross-country trails, the start and finish lines, and as you see, we're kind of marrying that into the site as well. And also just the meadow grasses and the ornamental grasses and the things that you're accustomed to at Legacy Park are still going to be implemented. So where we're at and kind of where we're going, we're in concept design. We're kind of getting to the end of concept design, as I said, we've got our last public meeting tonight. We'll have a city commission work session on, well, we've had it on June fifth, but then we'll have the actual presentation on the twentieth. And then, you know, with approvals, we'll start going into design and getting ready for construction documents, permitting, and all of that good stuff. So the target here is that we can be construction-ready by the end. By the time we have somebody ready, contractor on board, ready to start moving dirt. And projected opening, it really depends on a lot of different variables. It depends on the contractor and how long they need and so forth. But as of now, we would project somewhere in that winter, twenty-four, the spring, twenty-five. The questions or open discussion?
That's your questions. The first one is the uniqueness of the orthopedic is a great idea and most interesting in a fact. Like the uniqueness of this design is that it's off-site, so, you know, it's close, if anything, it's close to Tally Street. But one of the limitations we've had with athletics is nothing. We're getting two practices, two games, that sort of thing. So how would we reconcile that, like, would kids still have to be bused from like Decatur High School to this facility? And is that, is that something we still have to account for in the, in the budget is buses, bus drivers? Because that's always been a few problems. Because that's always been definitely a problem. And my second question is, on your design there, it looks like just to fit all this in, like you're like wall-to-wall, like street-to-side there, how close are you to where people live? This is very close to my house, and there's, you're close to the neighbors, and if you're talking about like field lighting, you know, games into the evenings, I wonder, I think a lot of great suggestions, hammocks even, like what kind of feedback you got from some of our community members who maybe may or may not have students in the district, or may have students who don't have athletes, as to how they feel about kind of some, having something like this, right? Again, that's not on school property, and how we would reconcile, again, with parking even, having it in the community and not on school property, or how we would deal with that.
Right. Yeah, and this is one of the overall master plan that was approved by the, some of the things that we've heard in public meetings was exactly that, concern about field lighting and some of those items. It's actually quite a good distance, you've got the conservation easement, we're not getting into any of the woods, so all of that's still going to have that buffer there for you, and then it just comes down to program.
Could you, could you go to one of the first slides? Because I think you had a picture of the full park with it, because there is a fair bit of distance, I think.
I think as the master plan continues to develop, there'll be residential, there'll be a lot of other pieces to this, and the track will probably blend in more so than some of that.
And the city is really kind of taking the lead on managing some of those things that you had questions about, Carmen. Our participation has been more about like, what does the track look like, how will it fit the needs, the actual, like you're saying, the overall master plan for the park, the city's really leading.
But, but we have heard similar comments, and again, you kind of look at the overall master plan, where the tracks, it shifts to still sit down in there pretty nicely, as I said, we're trying our best to blend this in. You know, some of the things that we've heard, and you think about a typical track, typically would have a chain link pin surround, right? We're doing a lot of things different here, so we're trying to create a space that you still have all the safety barriers and all the things that you typically have to have, but we're trying to eliminate some of those visual barriers. That would just be a permanent kind of isolate out there. So in terms of how often field lighting would be used and such, I, I can't speak to that necessarily, but I, my understanding is that this is something that we.
No, no Tanner Swift concert at midnight.
The sky's the limit, you know, you can, you can pick a wide number of people out here, it's green on the greens, all that good stuff, probably.
Thank you, and, and members of CSD representatives, appreciate all your work. In fact, the agenda, I need to move to approve the spring athletics and activity review. Should, we should move that to a consent item?
It's just a summary.
It's just a summary, so I didn't mention it, there's no need to discuss it, so that information is included for your packet, it's a review of all the athletic events, et cetera, that happened in the spring for the board to do. Now move on to discussion items. First up is vision, mission, and portrait of a CSD scholar.
Yeah, and this is a for board approval. At the last work session, I gave an overview of the process and previewed the draft of the vision and mission statement, as well as the portrait of a graduate. So just to read for the record, the recommended update for the vision is, "We strive to cultivate an educational foundation that empowers students to realize their full potential, thrive as productive global citizens, ignite positive change, and create a more just and equitable world." The recommended updates for the mission statement read as, "In partnership with our community, our mission is to inspire and enable student growth through meaningful and engaging learning experiences, supported by highly qualified and caring educators in a safe and inviting environment." And then accompanying that is the portrait of a CSD scholar, and that is six components of 21st century skills, including creative, critical thinker, global citizen, equity advocate, collaborator, resilient, and leader. So that is an item that there's discussion or that the board is ready to approve.
Any comments or questions?
I appreciated the presentation at the last one session and all of the hard work that went into this and the, you know, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Ask for a motion to approve the vision, mission, and portrait of a CSD scholar?
I moved to approve the new vision, mission, this vision and mission statement and the portrait of the CSD scholar.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, hearing a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes, it's the new vision, mission, and portrait of the CSD scholar. Thank you for work on that and the NEV, and as part of that strategic plan I mentioned.
The second discussion item were two state of department reports, equity and student services, and state and federal programs. So those are provided for the board members in your packet, and if there's any questions, Dr. Huddleston and Ms. Holt are here to respond to those at this time.
I think I did, regarding equity in particular, I just wanted to have a, a quick explanation of how equity initiatives such as the JADE program are able to apply for funding and receive, I believe it is a grant that is available. If we could just be clear on the record very quickly on, on how to go about doing that so that we're, that information is, is captured.
Yeah, so what we decided to do this year is we get money from the state as a charter system, so we are putting that money into a pot that teachers and principals and leaders can apply for innovative grants that serve to further the three innovative practices outlined in our charter. So at this point, I've kind of teed up the NEV superintendent to kind of take that and lead that process and the application process, so given her the information, and she will take it from here.
And is it, is it expected that the superintendents or teachers apply, or students themselves, or?
I mean, I don't, it could be anything.
So anyone can apply, presumably anybody associated with the system can apply for that sort of funding as long as it meets our initiative? Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
How do we go about communicating the availability of that grant money?
That will be up to Dr. Whitaker on what she's ready to.
That was three hundred thousand from the state.
About six hundred.
Six hundred. I don't have any questions about the, the data, there's a lot there. A whole lot of policies being done. I appreciate including the, you know, I was looking at the PDIS data, for instance, and a lot of stuff to unpack and plan for initiatives for the next school year.
Yeah, it's really heavy.
All right, hearing no further questions. The third item under discussion is the mill rate change discussion. Sure, if you don't mind coming up, upline it in case we have any questions. And when did, when was that data, you recent, we were recent information about the millage rate change and the proposal from last time for the last school board meeting or was it at the work session?
The 23rd, 24th is when it came across, so I think it was just after the work session when we had mentioned it.
Okay. Okay, so just to give people an update, then I'll, I'll open it up. It's, and Ms. Brim, please.
Correctly, we've got a report back from the tax assessor's office that the, it's going to come in higher than we thought, and so one of the things we're proposing and discussing is lowering the millage rate to keep where we're getting basically what we expected, not, you know, raise taxes by keeping the tax and the millage rate the same. You've included and given us some data on what the point seven, what did you say?
Point seven.
Point seven. Do you have anything else you wanted to add or share about that?
No, that was just because of, at a fund balance of 10.10 percent, and initially we projected 7.19 percent. So although we're lowering the millage rate, we still are in a better financial position than initially.
What's, what's, what's the gap, what's the three percent gap there? Where did that come from?
As far as the increase?
Yeah, so basically, the, the assessor's value came in higher. We say, well, let's roll that back down then to meet it, but you then, you're correct, and I was looking at the deck, we're still going to have three percent more than we thought of that because we're not rolling it back all the way? Is that essentially what's happening?
Yes, because initially we projected 54 million, and with a millage rate of 20.3, it would be 57.
Okay.
So it's still more revenue coming. We have one more millage rate here on Thursday at five o'clock, and then Carl Horton at 5:15, which you all superficially vote for.
And, and that is the meeting where we take the motion to actually vote to reduce the millage?
Correct.
And, and just so that we're clear for the public, I think each tenth of a mill is worth $290,000. So the reduction that we're talking about here is a reduction of just a little bit over $2 million in terms of, of digest. So I think this is, certainly I intend to support it, I would welcome everyone else as well, but I think this is a, it's a good step in, in just trying to ensure that what we're taking in is matching more to what our expenditures are as opposed to just where the digest happens to go.
Other questions from the board about the proposal at the meeting? Okay, excellent. And that, that hearing is at 5:00 PM Thursday, virtually, correct?
Correct.
Excellent. Any other questions about that? All right, thank you so much. All right, hearing no other issues, move to future dates, which are in the packet, let me kind of pull those up, sorry I jumped around there. I guess the first one is that Thursday, correct? For the millage rate hearing at 5:00 PM and a special call board meeting at 5:15 PM on the 15th, and then we won't meet again until July 12th, my twentieth and wedding anniversary, so we're going to have to keep that one quick for the executive session. Any questions about future dates? Okay, hearing none, pass the consent items, I move to adjourn the CSD June school board meeting at 7:18 PM. Thank you.